I publicly just to reply of the United States to America. The Republic will stand one nation under God indivisible with all justice and justice for all.
So, Jen, that's goals, you still like that? Okay, I've had a meeting about it, I hope chat. Here, here, how about it's in what there we go. All right, now we're talking.
All right, uh, looking for approval of a regular session minutes of August the fourth. Move.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, special meeting minutes, uh, motion for approval of August eighth. Probably for motion.
Second vote?
Yes.
Was either?
I think, actually, I think, Andy, I think you need to have stayed because you attended virtually. That was the special meeting with the, uh, about the traffic calling policy on Friday.
Well, you weren't there. Were you there?
If you were, take it you had the conflict, you had the unexpected conflict, I thought.
I did.
Yeah.
So there.
That was the one at nine o'clock or ten o'clock in the morning, right?
Did you have a meeting? Well, we had a meeting, but I don't think it was a, I don't think it was an official meeting because we.
Well, according to my notes, both, uh.
Neither you nor.
You were here.
No, you were the only one there.
That was, that was last.
Yeah.
That was, that was the insurance meeting.
No, the August eighth wasn't, wasn't that the insurance meeting or?
No, that was, that was.
Oh, that was.
July. No, this was, this was.
Right, I'm still.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
But I was there.
Yes, you were there.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I understand.
Because I was at all of them, I will vote yes.
All right, Francie County Sheriff, uh, here, Brookside, anything on Brookside that we know, Barbara?
Uh, we'll talk a little bit tonight about, uh, traffic policy.
Yeah, we'll.
Scope.
Right, uh, where in town else?
Um. No, uh, oh, uh, well, we'll talk about it at the end of this report, so.
Yeah, that's kind of rebel.
Uh, we did get, uh, notification, we had, uh, chief and I had met with the H O A presidents. Um, couple of weeks ago, uh, talking them about several issues, one with the Ballard. Parking issue down there, um, we had asked them to get back to their board, ask them the direction that they'd like to see as a community. They sent an email, both of them sent an email, basically the same message. They want to keep the balance as they are. And obviously that gets, uh, the chief and the folks discussing about the, the parking, uh.
They asked if we don't paint the yellow line with curves, um, so we, we had some discussion and figured out a signage. Situation or solution for the no parking, so. Today, it is a sign.
That's, um, anything else, Tommy?
Really? Okay, old business, um. The, uh, castle property on Riverside, uh, check arranged a meeting with Andrew Catapack here at the township on, uh, thirty, August the seventh with him and we, uh, chat. Uh, John, the administrator and I sat down, we had a discussion and he is wanting to comply. So we have emailed, contacted information and all on you now and we're looking forward to getting, uh, getting it gated off and no trespassing on it. Our police officers are watching it since there's no legal dumping going on again. And, uh, now just balls and Andrew's flirt while waiting to hear back from you.
We were sending stuff to, um.
Right.
An address which will not get responded to.
Right.
Leave it at that.
That's where I was leaving it. And, uh, and under new business, uh, Wednesday evening at six P M. We have the, um, Brookside Country Club Development Plan Modification Application to to have a meeting here at the township and meet at golf course at six P M. And.
So we're meeting at the golf course at six?
Six, meet at the golf course at six, they'll show you what they're wanting to do, why they're wanting to do it, where they're at, then we will come back here and then conduct a hearing.
Got you.
We could have conducted the hearing there, but I felt that that was not an appropriate venue.
No. Yeah. Um, okay, uh, anything else in Arizona?
Uh, just Thursday, Henderson Road, uh, twenty seven twenty property down there, uh, or thirty seven twenty, the, uh, rim cutting ceremony that's going on Thursday morning at nine A M.
We mean, hopefully, yeah, our, you know, sanitary engineer with us that we can talk a little bit about the
Yeah.
other project down there, uh, as well as county, deputy county administrator. Uh, we, we need to figure out that water, so infrastructure, the lack thereof, Henderson Heights, Jalberia.
That's it.
Okay.
Oh, Brookside cottages.
Oh. Brookside cottages have started with Bob Webb has started there at, uh, Greenville. At the end of Greenville and, uh, nobody notified. But the clear cut is in there clearing the property. Let's raise the alarm from some of the, uh, residents there wondering what was going on. So now I'm just waiting on Bob Webb to contact us and put us in contact with his building superintendent and the plan of moving forward.
Have you looked at the P U D texts for that?
I haven't. I, I did look just a little bit the other day, but I.
It shows hours of operation, what they're required to do, all that good stuff, so we should probably censor getting along, we should probably familiarize ourselves with those things.
Is there a pre-con meeting?
No, we did not, no.
We're trying to get it set up.
Trying to get one set up.
Yeah.
I didn't know, I know, he said to me that they had a pre-con meeting in the city of Columbus and then I thought, well, where's Big Bang on that meeting, but.
Elizabeth Viles has been communicating with, uh, Bertus from Advanced Silver Design.
Yeah.
Uh, she told him that he needed to reach out to us to set up a break on the township. Uh, the Franklin County Drainage Engineer and, uh, I replied and asked them to add to have Bob Webb build your development in that pre-con as well.
Someone has to do a favor. I need Mr. English at the meeting. He's got a busy schedule, but I mean, he's not retired like some other people. Just saying, again, turning on the business, so if we could try to make some accommodation, even if it's virtual. But okay, virtual?
Oh, yeah, whatever, I mean, whatever, I can be there.
Cause he has a background and what time do you text him and that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, since, since we have a retired trustee, can, can we start forwarding phone calls to?
The retired?
To the retired guy who has all this time on his hands now and needs something better to do.
I'll, I'll make sure that.
He'd be happy.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, road department.
Uh, under old business, the, uh, township construction updates, uh, the concrete work is kind of on pause right now, uh, Decker moved out, well, they moved in to do the concrete work around the school, uh, prior to the first day, now they've moved on to the projects that they were doing before, so, uh, the county's saying it's going to be a week or two before they're back in there. We should have a schedule that I'll send out, uh, hopefully by the end of the week here, um, so I'm Decker on, on that. Uh, and then the, the township roofs, uh, six one four is going to be here tomorrow morning to, uh, replace the back half of the garage I'm building too, uh, they're not going to do that whole, the whole roof. Their foreman was out here taking pictures and he can't show the color match issue on the front half anymore, all he, all he can get pictures in that is the back half. Uh, this, that back half of the garage too, and that's what Atlas is approved to, uh, replace. He was out multiple times last week and prior with the drone trying to fly and find a color issue with that front half to get it, that whole garage replaced.
But there is a color match issue on the back.
There is a color match issue and they noticed it during the install and we had two different color palettes here, they switched to one color when they noticed it on the back half, so everything was replaced with the color that they used on, on the whole roofs. Uh, they just had a spot that they thought was a color issue when they installed on the front half of the garage and was trying to include that, but they, they can't see it anymore. And none of the drawn footage is showing. I have a bunch of pictures that were sent to me, I'm having troubles getting them downloaded from the file. Uh, I'll put them in that maintenance folder as soon as I.
This, I don't know, everything will be the same?
Everything will be the same on, on building one or two. That's all I have, and then we have the proposal from, uh, Compass on the agenda here as well.
Yeah.
You want to do that, I think, uh, wait. Um, how much time do you have? Okay.
Before we move on from road, I just want to recognize the road crew with their efforts to go out there and clean up that tree that blew over. Uh, those guys responded immediately, they're out there, we guys are out there four hours, I.
Three of us.
Uh.
Three hours.
Three hours. Um, but they were able to get the road open, went back the next day, cleaned everything up, they just above and beyond what they did out there, so I just want to publicly recognize our road crew for what they did and how fastly, how fast they did it. Quickly. Things got opened up for the residents.
Could they buy lunch for you guys?
They did.
They appreciate it, really do.
Uh, doesn't look anything under.
Fire and E M S. Uh, Upper Arlington had fourteen runs and very township.
Okay, uh, police?
Police. Um. Six days prior to the start of school, the police department was set up in the school zones monitoring what was going on, um, they issued ten warnings for speed and they issued four citations. They will continue to be visible in the school zones throughout the rest of the school year. I hate when I lose stuff. I have a folder. Need hand. This isn't it. There is a, um, let's see, contract for the, uh.
Yep.
That we call it. The D U I task force, you all have to sign.
I will find that.
Um. So, anyway. Before you leave, we'll, we'll get you to sign that. And that's it for police.
Yeah, that's fair.
Um. We have a, a legal update and that is in reference to a letter from the Department of Taxation, final determination we got, which basically says now the TIF has been recognized and approved by the auditor and it's going to start to be collected on you, gentlemen. Will need to find some votes to be on the TIF review board that you created back in twenty twenty two. Members of that board have to be the county auditor, one trustee, one representative from the school district, one representative from the J V S school locally and one person from, uh, oh, I said the school district dad, but so. And that board will meet. The trustee representative doesn't necessarily have to be a physical trustee, it could be a designee of the trustee, so. And Becky told us she just went to a meeting for Brown Township doing the exact same thing. But it's a meeting they have downtown at the county auditor's office, I think they do the whole county on the same day. Becky said she was in and out of there in about five minutes, but you guys have to figure out who you want to be on that board.
Is that, he says she'd be long to do it?
Yeah.
Experience. Yeah, she's got experience.
But we still need to figure out the, uh, school district admin person and the J V S admin person.
Who are J V S?
I would think down here would be someone her in Columbus Delaware, I mean, it's the joint vocational school, I, I don't know what they call it now.
Contex schools, yeah.
Yeah. In Delaware, it's.
Do we have one here? I know Delaware's got one of twenty three.
I think every school district is required to have one.
Yeah, but all the kids from Oregon can go to Delaware.
That's what I was.
Is that where they go?
Hmm.
Okay, so then we'll probably have to get somewhere from, somebody from the Delaware.
County?
J V S to be on that board. And it has to do with, it's a seventy five ten tip, which means ten years, you're going to collect seventy five percent of that and twenty five percent, I think, needs to go to the score. Pete, Pete understands it, he's got it all figured out. But he told me that's the board that you need.
Maybe it's Fort Hayes, now, who?
I think it is, I think.
Rear Technical Education Columbus City Schools.
Fort Hayes of J V S?
I'll find it.
We'll figure.
Well, close school, I gotta call into Michael for something else, so it's not gonna be him, there'll be somebody else.
Okay.
Yeah, Becky will do. Our part.
Yeah, it's Delaware County. Cause the other one's in Lorain, and then Jefferson County. Okay.
Okay, um. Under old business, I think I talked about this before, but I've been in contact with Mount Carmel Work Health for, um, providing us with drug tests in the event that we would have one of our C D L drivers involved in a crash, uh, I and I had talked about this and, uh, to cover everybody's best interests, it would be wise to have a drug test currently. What is the company you use online?
Public Safety, uh, Cal.
Yeah, um. They're not the most convenient folks to use. Um. Mount Carmel Work Health, we can't do anything at the hospital here, you have to go to a work health location, but they have one in Hill yard, it is thirteen minutes from here. Um, but, but they can also provide us services such as immunizations, we're required to offer our police and public safety folks that it's be vaccinations. Um. We can have our employees go there if they want a flu shot, all those kinds of things, it could all be done at this place, so I I have been working with them, they've given kind of a menu of everything they, they do, I received that today, I didn't, wasn't able to get it out to you guys, but I will email it to you. So you guys can look at what they do and then I think at the next meeting I will ask for, uh, a motion to use them for our drug testing and immunization processes.
Okay.
Um. I T transition update. Um, we are moving in that direction. Uh, it's been a little more challenging and complex than I think we're led to believe it's going to be, is that a fair statement?
That's fair. Part of that was because I T made real, didn't. Let's say, think I'll say this, it's not about I T being made real, so Thanks C S C is now called Redhelm because they got bought out again. And a lot of their practices, um, involved holding on to licenses in their own private entity, so it's been a challenge for I T made real to transfer like Microsoft accounts and stuff to them because Redhelm slash Thanks C S C owns it. So they're expecting that to be finished by the end of the week, but it's taken a lot longer than expected because Redhelm's business practices are a little, um, protective, shall we say.
You're real. Like a bad penny?
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. Yeah.
So, but we're moving forward, um.
A little bit early.
A little bit early, yeah, we'll get there. And then under new business, we need to mostly declare the items below the longer needed for public use, unfit to use uh, or acquired and for having no rights of the township and authorizing disposal by auction, donation dumpster for destruction and those items are an Acer Aspire seven seven one four Z laptop, a compact Recero desktop tower, uh, Cooler Master Elite P C, five old filing cabinets, Panasonic Toughbook C F forty eight and eleven year length desk phones, those are the old, old phones. Of those, we will probably try to sell on GovDills, but, uh, the rest of that stuff is really uh, enslaves to be destroyed. Unless the Smithsonian wants those computers back, definitely that.
I'll make the motion to redeclare those items obsolete.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes. Um. Well, I was hoping to squeeze some time to get Michelle here, but she's not here, so it's.
Do her thing and then do him.
What? No, I was just, I was hoping to get Michelle, um, I guess we can make the motions for her, get her stuff done. Um. Okay, um, I moved to transfer.
You want me to ask for a motion? Motion to transfer nine thousand six hundred forty nine dollars from the Chloride Reduction Grant Fund twenty nine nineteen to the general fund as reimbursement for the grant with, which was received from the state.
Uh, okay.
Public grant motion.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I also need a motion to transfer twelve thousand two hundred ninety dollars and thirty three cents from the Police Radio Grant Fund twenty nine oh two, the general fund, uh, as less grand money was received originally expected.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We need a motion to approve favor on the purchase.
I will make that motion.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
For that grant fund for the, uh, for the wintry of, does that mean we got, we had to take twelve twelve thousand out of the.
Yeah, we got twelve thousand less than what they originally thought.
When was that, if I remember?
Um, it had to do with, um. Hold on here, Chip.
I didn't.
It's, um. It had to do with the type of grant that it was and the model. That's Steve. I have an answer.
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it. See you later. Yeah.
Uh, we are going to go to the proposal, the campus infrastructure group, perfect table of our traffic set, or unless you want to address.
But I just, this has become a little more urgent, I know this was originally talked about this being two parter and we'd look at the traffic impact study, developer. And then the second piece is, well, something's going to get developed there one day, so what are the measures that we can talk about? I think we had a really good conversation at that meeting, uh, couple of weeks ago, it seemed like at this point, but um, so O dot, uh, at that point in time in our conversation, O dot had told us that that light, traffic light that was being proposed was not warranted. Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, the deputy director and I were having a direct talk about some other things, he said, I got some bad news from you, for you in the sense that we believe that light is now warranted. And so I said, well, you're going to have to explain that one to me. If he explained that somebody went to governor's office and then went to the director, wrote out and blah, blah, blah. I mean, I understand, I mean, I like it, but he says, no, we'll have to explain it, that's, that's fine, I, I want our traffic engineer to be present when you explain it, so I can look at him and say what do you think? Yes, I'm not traffic engineer, so. Um, so that's, that gets us to the point, what I'm saying is that this becomes more urgent for us to start looking at measures over there.
Okay.
What's the topic?
It'll be the time thing or something.
For the project itself?
Yeah, like for the traffic light.
Uh, they're not looking to start till next year, so.
It'd be after they're completed?
Uh, they, I think that it's a twenty seven completion date, I think it's somewhere second half of twenty six, first half of twenty seven, where they're starting to look at significant build out.
Are, are we?
If everything went okay. That means some property has to be bought too and so.
Is there any opportunity that since the rug got pulled out from us that they basically say hey, you're putting, you're putting you know, pressure on us now?
We want the developer to.
Yeah.
Money towards improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or even, even O dot.
Yeah.
It's like, hey, all right, you said one thing and now you're doing a complete.
Yeah, I mean, it's, at minimum, it's worth asking.
Maybe if we were to do like the intersection tables, just hypothetically, it'd be a thing that we'd want to do. Uh, then yeah, I mean, something, I think we need to ask them that the developer fork over money to. But, uh, I think currently they have, it has no cars ever going on the bay from their, which is not true, so let's get in reality and then, but I think you're right, uh, Andy, I think it's worth an ask at all, but I think it's you know, them just doing like a little sidewalk kind of standing area on the other side of one sixty one, doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
Doesn't go anywhere. So.
Maybe something like, something like that you kind of over ask, it's whatever you ask, whether they're going they'll say probably no or chisel you, so maybe ask for more than you hope to get and, and maybe it'll give you what you want.
Well, and to chat's point, this kind of puts us, this, you know, like we were getting ready, I think we could use that and say, hey, we were getting ready to, to do this. Now it's becoming more pressure, right, so, um, cut. John, you want to walk us through your, I'm hearing it's Michelle, perfect timing, perfect hiding.
Real, real quick about the development, I mean, they they've obviously come to some agreement from the warrant, but the warrant is only part of the traffic impact study. It kind of separated that out because it was so important to them. So they'll still have a revision of the traffic impact study. Um, so, you know, they aren't quite there yet. I think it's probably a formality, but that's something we want to keep an eye on.
Yes.
Um, perfect timing, we're talking traffic.
Yeah, my favorite topic, release.
Everything else is done.
Book of drugs.
Including with physical, everything's approved.
Really, everything's done? Wow.
Um. So John, do you want to walk us through your proposal?
Sure. Um, I mean, we, after we met and had, had a productive discussion, I tried to boil that down into a scope, that's I could. Um. You know, there's some data collection and first that primarily you guys are doing this we things with the trailer, uh, Franklin County agreed to put their speed monitoring devices out again. Um, so we'll have some data, we'll be doing, uh, field observations, um, some measurements, things like that. Once we have all that data in, that's what we'll utilize as well as the field observations to break the bay into the sections where travel patterns are and the characteristics are the same and the moving characteristics are the same. Um, cause you know, there's going to be different segments that are going to move moving like a different solutions. Um. And once it's broken into sections, we'll take the data and those specific sections and the moving characteristics, the travel characteristics come up with, uh, multiple potential uh, traffic calling solutions through each of those sections. We, we think there'll probably be four, but in the proposal we wrote, uh, max of five, this could be more areas, um, you know, real wood scoop is probably going to be warm on its own because obviously it's kind of You know, real wood scoop is probably gonna be warm on its own, cause obviously it's kind of different than the rest of McBay. Um, and then we could easily see McBay getting broken into four separate sections. So we'll. Develop traffic calm, handful of traffic calming measures that we think will be effective on each of those sections. Um, we're proposing that we come in and present that to the trustees. We don't wanna take anything to this focus group before, you know, um, the townships had a chance to. Um, you know, pass judgment on it. We think. Probably the meeting with the township will probably be able to boil some things down. Um. We're hopeful that we could boil that down to the point where. At the focus group, we only take two solutions for each section. We don't wanna, we don't wanna overwhelm, um. You know, residents and, and people that maybe aren't as familiar with traffic calming and traffic engineering issues. You know, that they're looking at. Eight, ten or fifteen different types of solutions. So we're hoping we can boil it down. Um, couple per section. We expect some of the sections to have some common ones, so. I don't think it's gonna be too overwhelming. We don't want it to be this. Big crap bag and then we can't get them to agree on anything. Um. So we'll, I mean, we'll. Bring some photographs that are just general photographs of these traffic calming measures. For, uh, when we present to the township. But when we go to the residents. We'll actually, uh, do drawings of those on McBay. Um, in the wood, so they'll more easily be able to visualize what we're talking about. Where things would be exactly, cause that'll, that'll be a lot more important than them, I think. Um. We'll have a meeting with the, or at least we're proposing, uh, meeting with the township after that. To kind of go through their, um. Comments, things they like, things they didn't like. And hopefully, um. Come to a final recommendation in each section, or at least send us back. To put together the final report. Maybe there's a couple. Things that we can't quite all agree on and you may just send us back and say. We need you guys to make your best recommendation on this one, but I think we'd be able to boil it down with the. Comments of the focus group, but we'll see. We might get all kinds of stuff from the focus group. We aren't expecting. Those can be. Kind of a wild card sometimes. Um.
Hey, John, not to interrupt, how did we document? The meeting that we had with Brookside residents last year? The traffic we needed to make them add.
You mean at the school?
Yeah.
I don't think it got recorded.
But some of them.
Were, I mean, I took my, I took my own notes, so I have some notes from that.
Be good to get those to John, cause John, we had a. Um, kind of. Basically what we're talking, what you're talking about, one, two, three, four. Uh, we, we just had a general open house and residents came in and kind of talked about. Traffic. So, um, it'd be probably good for you to review some of those notes.
Yeah.
We got from that, but part of your.
And that wasn't like there's a focus group that was. Everybody.
Okay, yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, fine that.
And one more thing, John. So the county was out. They, they have. A group of interns that came out. To do some physical observation and. Uh, we'll try to get whatever notations that they took and observations that they. Were able to gather. I don't know if that'll help, not help.
Yeah, it will. I, I, and I'm glad you brought that up. I neglected to mention that, but we had that in the proposal too, is something that we. Use to. You know, help us make decisions on what might be.
Chat, if you get that, will you please?
Yeah.
So right, I.
I found that in there, so I don't know that part of what he was.
I have folks identify that I've talked to about being part of this focus group and I was. The one thing that I have not done yet is, um, and I can, is someone at the top of the hill on McBay. I don't know that. That's it. Positive or negative in terms of adding someone that lives up there, because it, I don't know that we are going to have a solution for that top. Area. Do you want someone from there?
Um. First, not being completely local to the neighborhood. Well, it's.
I'm sorry. But how do you not know that?
Is that the first southern part? Is that before you come down?
Yes, exactly. Just that top section. It's a small number of houses there. And, and what I was thinking was Kathy Turner that lives right there. I mean, they have issues, as you know, Ian, that they've had issues with the visibility coming up. To get out of their driveway. Um. But, you know.
It's probably a good idea, um, because they're probably, they're gonna be most affected by. The insulation and the signal. On that end.
Yeah.
You know, if people start coming up at red lights, it's gonna be, you know, potentially. Looking driveways and things like that. Picture how far back the first.
The fir-, I mean, the first ones right up there at the corner are, you know.
Two.
There's two, yeah, and then there's.
Sure.
Yeah.
What, there's maybe what, five houses on one side?
Yeah.
Two houses, that's either six, so like eight.
From the corner.
There.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there, and apologies, because I'm the one that was tardy, was there new information about the traffic light or something?
Yes.
You want to say it?
I'll let you.
And so I had breakfast with the deputy director last week. Other than. This came up at the very end. I think you potentially left it at the end. Um, he said. I, I don't have some great news for you about that traffic light. And I said, well, which one are we talking about? And he said, it's from McBay. And he said. You know, it wasn't warranted. When we looked at the numbers, but now it's warranted. And I said, well, we're gonna have to have a conversation about why it went from unwarranted to warranted, but I really kind of need my traffic engineer by my. Catch to my help, listening to what you're saying. And so I would assume, so I texted him today. He hasn't texted me back. I assume we'd go up and, and talk with him and Christine O'Forrekin. Uh, the folks who were in that initial meeting anyway, and just. Have them hand walk us through. How to get from here to there. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's a political thing, I understand politics of things, but. But I need to know. That doesn't, no, that's not the answer. We, they need to give a technical answer for us.
Does it come with a check for us to do a lot of improvements?
I don't know. We're gonna, we're gonna make that ask and, but we need to know what we're asking. Um. Mr. Robert Point over ask. Or under ask or ask exactly what you want, so. Yeah, it's not great news.
I wish I had them coming. Very bad news.
Yeah, we'll get that ready to set up.
So apologies, I didn't mean to step on you there, um.
Whatever.
Is there a general idea, timeframe in mind of? When? We would have those concepts to the board?
I mean. The school just starting. Usually from a traffic engineer perspective, you don't really wanna do anything until schools had two full weeks. You know, it's just chaos. Um. You know, parents are changing their schedules and schools are changing the drop off from your team. Um, so. You know, I, and if somebody could send me Mike and Draco's contact information, I thought I had it, but. I wanted, but it turns out I don't, um. I'd like to reach out to Mike and, and if he's already put out the speed equipment. Have it stay out till that third week of school. Um, so we get kind of normalized traffic patterns. Same thing with the trailers. Um, and then, uh, school started last week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Middle of last week, yeah.
So, so probably next week, week after, we probably have all the data from everybody. And we'll get you some locations for the trailer. Um. So you have two weeks to get that. Probably a week to. Break it up into sections and come up with some proposals. Probably a week to come up with all the various photographs. Linking to the sections we think the traffic calming measures might go into, um.
So six to eight weeks, are you thinking?
Maybe a little bit less, five to seven. We could probably push that, you know, if we need to, we could. Probably accelerate it some.
Well, and then we've got, of course, the, the construction's starting in October, is that right?
September.
September. So we wanna make sure that we get the data. Yeah.
You have any great close contact information?
Thank you. What's the construction?
Sidewalk.
There's, you know, that first, I say for our school sidewalk across from the school and going down to.
I didn't know about that, okay.
Um.
Sorry, that was on me. Yeah, it's, it's the immediate. Form of. Schools from property. Yeah, okay.
Goes down, if you're facing the school, it goes down with the first court on the right. What would that be? That's south. And then the first corner on the Temerwood. On the north, and then that first segment directly across. There's a lot of, of, of course, the kids walking, but also the people across that, that park to pick up their kids there.
It's such a.
That'd be helpful. Thank you, Ian.
Great, thank you. Sorry, John. I missed that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we talked about it. I guess we.
Yeah, and then, you know, then we just document everything in the report. Um, once. You know, we get to the point where we, um, nail things down. We just document everything and then. You know, uh, for you guys to review, you know, we've been addressing comments that the township has on the report. Um, then, you know, issue, issue will find a report that could be. You know, utilized later if for some reason this will get stalled or something like that, which never knows. Priorities gonna come up, you know? Can push this aside, even though it's hot now.
Got it.
No questions?
There we go. Uh, Mr. Chairman. Had moved to approve the proposal submitted to the board with us, the Indian Conference Infrastructure Group. On August thirteen, twenty twenty-five, we give out, uh, twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
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 Think, well, we'll have John sign the contract and that'll give you your. At least the house.
Authorization.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks, John. Who do you got there?
Are you?
Do you have anything? Brookside?
Um, I have a couple of things. First.
Non-related traffic.
Non-related traffic. Um, in your email from last Friday, did you see it?
Yeah.
Your, your poll's down.
I got them from Becky and Amanda and Chief.
Do it.
If they're better people than us.
The other thing, it's about to pick a date.
Yeah, so pick a date.
Well, yeah. Yeah. What are our options now? Both, considering what.
Your poll can't be displayed right now.
That's what mine said too.
Worked on Friday. I mean, as much as I enjoy when we go back and forth about.
Have the idea.
Date. As much as I enjoy going back and forth about meeting times and dates, I thought I'd try to be a little more efficient, but.
I did, I did. I do appreciate the effort.
It's an idea. It's a great idea. If it worked, it'd be even better. Um, hang on, I'm getting in there. Tempting to.
We don't have to make any action. I may do your like.
That's the sign.
The sign.
So you said.
Your poll is down.
Chief say just sign them?
Hmm?
Like Steve just say just sign.
Okay.
The screaming is edited too as of this day.
Hmm? It needs to mention.
Well. There you go.
It's a food thing.
I will remind Steve. Of that.
It's gonna make watching.
We do this every year, right? Every year, I make a motion that we, uh, enter into an agreement with Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Regarding the, the, my task force contract for, uh, twenty twenty-six.
Second? Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, Tuesday, September sixteenth at eight AM. Actually, we have one person that can't do that.
Sorry, let's say the one we're talking about.
Okay, September sixteenth at eight AM. September twenty-sixth at eight AM.
Which one?
Yeah. Oh, the sixteenth?
The sixteenth is the first one.
Get on right.
And I need you too.
Sixteenth of September?
Yes.
Tuesday.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm giving you multiple options, I'm just trying to. That one works.
Yeah.
All three?
Yeah.
Okay, um. What about you, John?
I'm, I'm good, whatever you have. What date do we talk?
Ian?
I'm good, sixteenth.
Sixteenth, eight AM.
Sixth, I'm good.
The only person, Amanda can't do that, so.
Twenty-sixth. Yeah, scratch twenty-sixth.
Oh.
Twenty-sixth she can't do?
No, the sixteen.
Oh, okay, what about the twenty-sixth?
She can't. Okay, how about the twenty-sixth at nine AM, Friday the twenty-sixth at nine?
They can do that too. We can do that. Let's do that, that.
Okay, cause everybody can do that. Okay.
Twenty-sixth, nine AM.
Yes.
Got it.
So, Mr. Luke, would you be able to?
I do that.
Do your, I can do that.
It helps too, because I do see an email that you sent out, so I can just have everybody that was requested.
How about that?
Friday, September twenty-sixth.
Would you mind then, just in case anybody has to do it via team?
Yeah, so. Just in case.
Thank you. And thank you also, by the way, for including my work email when you're sending meetings. That's so helpful. I said, I usually just end up happy to forward them over or somebody will. Schedule it for me. Thank you for that. Okay. And then the other thing was, um. Software solutions. Um.
Oh, that's the accounting.
That's the accounting software. So. I know it's still work in progress, but are we nearing giving you what you want without? Spending all of that money on a.
I don't see any.
Okay.
I, I personally, I don't. Think it's. I'm getting what I need.
Okay.
So you want to see how we can get out of it?
Yeah, so I had Pete look, do a cursory review of the agreement and there's some conflicting. Concepts in there as to. Um. In terms of what if we're, the refund and all of that good stuff, so. If you folks are okay with it, I will reach out to them and.
The only question I have is this. Those. We were paying for that using the ARCA funds.
Question.
How was that?
That's a good one. I'll have to find that out.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I'll put Becky, she'll talk to Julie.
Okay, let me find that out before we take action, but we're not, um. I mean, certainly we've not used any of it.
Right.
We'll figure that out, okay. Those are the two items that I've had that were not part of my.
We're not, so I couldn't spend anything anymore than what we were.
Right.
We're just trying to get the money's add.
Do you have the language? Um. No, but Luke won't. My back of obsession for, uh, employee compensation. Yeah, I two G, one. What is this? G one, one twenty-one, twenty-two, G one. What is this? G one, one twenty-one, twenty-two G one.
Yeah.
I don't think I said that correctly. Firework, I'll go.
Mr. English.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Mr. Roper.
Yes. Okay. Take five minutes. Who says?